Do you start that?
I didn't get that.
Or Siri.
Siri didn't get what you said there, Emmett.
How annoying.
I fear these things are taking charge. Okay, I think we have seven o'clock. So I'm gonna call it to order. This is a Board of Selectmen's meeting, Wednesday, May 15th, 2019. And, pleasure legions.
To the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sharon, are we recording now?
Linda started it, yeah.
Okay, alright. We are recording.
Yeah, hopefully.
And, I'm looking for, motion sheet here. Now I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Sue, I think you're there. Any corrections on that, or, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of minutes, we have one set of minutes. Have you had a chance to take a look at them?
Mm-hmm.
And that's from, May 1st, I believe. Now I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of May 1st, 2019, as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
And, any discussion or corrections on that?
And this may be a clarification. Talking on page two, item 5B, the second paragraph on page two. I think it was 5B. Yeah. There's a general discussion regarding the state's proposed project. Mrs. Smith recommended Mr. Lyman request that the DOT define in writing the town's rights and responsibilities once the project is completed. That was specifically towards the town project, I believe.
For which?
The town project. Page two, just above C.
And I've got you where we are, I'm just trying to...
Oh, okay, I thought you were, I thought you said D.
Town. I may not have made that clear when I stated it, because we have never received anything in writing, to best of my knowledge, what exactly are, we can do with the signs, now that they are ours and the project is completed.
We have never been turned, they've never turned the signs over to us.
Well, better yet, then we need to determine if that has happened.
And the only town that seems to think they were turned over was Killingworth. And, they're not so sure anymore either.
Well, I guess that needs to be clarified, then.
And, we can go back at them. They had originally indicated they would be turning them over to us eventually. And then when you came back at them, they said, "Well, not really. You're responsible for keeping them up and maintaining them."
Well, we need to get it in writing, exactly what our responsibilities are and when they are ours.
And we're gonna have a good opportunity coming up.
It had to do with the towns. It's not clear that, which project we're talking about. The DOT project on the town roads? Or the DOT project on the state highways? This, my comment was for the town roads.
Okay.
So there is a clar-
Slight clarification, yes. You could say, "Once the town road sign project is completed." Thank you, Sharon. That's all I have.
Okay, Sue, you all set?
I'll open here.
Oh, that's right, Sue, you weren't, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, correspondence. We have a memo, we got it there, from Bill William Christofaro, Board of Finance. Subjects of mill rate adopted for 2019, 2020. On May 7th, 2019, Board of Finance adopted a mill rate of, for 2019, 2020, of 30.44. The 2019, 2020 budget for the town of East Hattam estimates that 4,018,685 will be received from the state of Connecticut for finance programs and grants. Without this assistance, the 2019, 2020 mill rate would be 35.01. So, we did get a fair chunk from the state, not as much as we're used to, but it's, it's fair enough. My report. Lori? There you are, hiding back there. Could you give us a report on the ambulance? What's happened and how that's functioning?
Yes, as we've spoken in previous meetings, the staffing agency has been placed fully now. And, our EMS director is on board totally. He has some numbers for you to report on.
Let me just reflect back. Month of March, our mutual aid rate, which we were having another annual service, come into town was 50%. So every, for every two calls, one was going to mutual aid. From April 1st to April 15th, we had a 45% rate. After April 15th is when the staffing service came on board, our mutual aid rate dropped from the 15th to the end of April, was 11%. And then, May, from May 1 to May 10, our mutual aid rate was 15%. It seems to be when the areas that were falling behind 4:30 to 6:00 PM spot, once the number is that, that the firehouse goes home and then when the attack comes on, we're working on finding out if the fire department is gonna put their increase to the budget, we'll be staffing six to six, or we do, we need to address that with the staffing agency. So as soon as I get an answer on that, we'll be moving forward.
Well, that's in the budget right now.
Yes, sir.
And we're interviewing for that. And the intent is that we will be six to six.
And during that time, I need to, Mr. Lyman, you were asking if I was gonna be taking calls. I took four calls, to save us from going to mutual aid myself. And then one assist with a mutual aid company, with a combatant patient, to back this hospital. That was a long ride. So, just to let you know, that's what, I didn't know you were asked that last time, and I just wanted to address that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Any questions?
Rob? You're all set on that? Okay. Question was raised at the last meeting, about Everbridge, when the boat, the bridge is out. And, one of the dilemmas there is trying to get a hold of someone. They stop answering the phone once the bridge has a problem. And, when we can get an answer, and if it appears that it's gonna be out for anything that amounts to in terms of time, I'm talking to Craig, we are gonna try to get an Everbridge out, and let people know about that. This particular-
Who stops answering the phone?
Bridge tender.
The bridge attendants.
Okay.
They're focused pretty much on trying to resolve the problems.
Okay, makes sense.
I have probably six different numbers that I can call. Sometimes you can get through to someone. Eventually, they really do get back to you, but usually by then, the problem's solved. So it's hard to get information out of them. But as I say, they're pretty busy at that moment. So... If we can get information, and it appears that it's gonna be closed for any extended period, we're gonna try to get an Everbridge out.
So how do you find out the bridge is out?
I'll get a phone call from one of the attendants, if they can do it. And lacking that, you know, I've gotta find out however. I, this last one, I got a phone call, probably about 11 o'clock at night, and said it was out, and within a matter of, less than half an hour, I guess, I had another call that said it's working again. It's lightning strike. And then the next morning, apparently, when they went to open the bridge for a boat, suddenly it jammed, and the, what do you call them, the...
Gates.
Gates, or whatever, jammed up. They had a problem, took them a little while, they got them down, and they found that they weren't gonna be able to open the bridge at all. There was gonna be no boat traffic, but they were able, by the time I got down there at 8 o'clock, to check in person, they indicated that the bridge was going to be usable for traffic, vehicles. And, I said, "That's great." I said, "Just keep the vehicles moving, the boats will have to wait until we get it resolved." And they indicated that somewhere in the electrical system, the lighting had fried a portion of it. And they were looking for it. I think that took, what, about two or three hours for them to resolve, and then it was open again. Okay. Any questions on that, or, I mean...
It seems to be a better, we need to get a more consistent method of getting notifications from DOT to you, or someone, or Craig, or something, so...
It's been a struggle, and, as I say, I've got a bunch of numbers, as soon as I know there's a problem...
Yeah, that's a problem. If you don't know there's a problem, they should be notifying both Hattam and East Hattam.
To the extent that they can, they do.
Yeah, yeah.
And, I think they did a pretty good job on this last one. That's about what I have. The only other thing that I wanted to address at this point, is the O'Connell Road extension. You raised issues with that, Rob. You had promised us a...
I had, and unfortunately, I can't meet that promise, because the surveyor did not supply it with me as he said he would. So we have his initial mapping, which I believe everyone has in their packet, which is, was drawn from the surveys of the properties. It's an expanded one, to show more detail, but...
So I wasn't at the last meeting, but I just, I asked a couple of questions.
Certainly.
So how are we bringing this up without an actual survey?
It is surveyed, it was surveyed.
But we don't have the survey.
This is a survey, just not the final survey.
Okay, for what it's for-
Not on anyone's, like, I mean...
Well, I can tell you who's surveyed it.
What it's worth-
Richard Gate, surveyor.
So, here's a deed. I've got a copy of the deed.
Thank you.
Wait, and I thought we'd already addressed the fact that
We went through-
It happened in the last administration, you know, the...
We-
Our Beth had gone to her supervisor, which was Mark at the time, and it was agreed upon, "There's nothing we can change about it." I don't understand why it's coming up again. I mean, we changed our process-
This reason it's coming up is because there were statements made that don't appear to be accurate, that the wall had to be taken to do the road job.
Okay.
None of us were present in those statements, so like, how do we know?
That was stated at the meeting, where the information was presented to us. That's why this was built, because walls were taken, the property was taken.
Okay. If I could-
Yes, sir.
Yeah, sorry.
Put a little research on that.
Okay.
And first of all, just gave Sue a map. I can pass that one down to you, out?
I have a copy of that.
Okay, then, give it to Sharon, so she has it.
Yeah.
And if you read the deed, and you look at the map, they're both in agreement, the property line is the stone wall. No questions asked.
Yeah.
Upon my asking and interrogating him, the project called for widening of the road. I happen to have a couple of pictures of it, and the four and a half feet, man, you can't measure a picture very well, but it sure doesn't look like four and a half feet to me, to the road. And these pictures are from 2011, showing the road as it existed at that point. In any case, when the road was widened, it became necessary, as I've been told, to redo the slope for the drainage, and to redo it, and the wall had to come down. The stone wall was in the way and would be removed. Ordinarily, we would rebuild that wall. And that's the deal that always takes place. Wall has half town, and it's half the property owners. And that isn't every single time, but in most cases.
Yep.
In this case, it is. 261 feet of wall. Approximate cost, talking to our land use people, for rebuilding a wall, using the same stones, is about $140 a foot. This one might have been a little simpler, but something in that neighborhood. The way I understand it, it was gonna work out to about $28,000 to rebuild that wall, 261 feet of it. Now, I think you can allow something for the driveway cut, which would reduce that slightly. The contractor, not the town, went to the property owner and said, "Look, is there a better deal, or is there a better way to deal with this? Can we do something else to satisfy what you want?" And the suggestion was made to erect a couple of pillars in lieu of redoing that wall. And, the homeowner indicated, "Yeah, that'll work for me." Cost for the town on that was about $6,000. You can estimate anywhere from 14 to $22,000 savings for the town. That was taken to the previous selectman, first selectman, for his approval. He verbally approved it, and the project went ahead. I think we have a bit of a thank you to go to the people involved, saying, "We really do appreciate it." We have our public works director here, and we have the contractor here. If you have any questions of them, go to... As far as I'm concerned, it was a legitimate deal. I do regret that there wasn't paperwork done on it. It seemed like it should have been, some sort of endorsement. But, as far as I can see, there's nothing there that really has any substance that we need to worry about. And we've been through it once already, and we're back here again, and spending a lot of our energy and time, and, you know what? None of us have that much energy and time to waste.
So, in comment. The decision that was made, and this is what I was brought up before, it was totally inappropriate in that there was no documentation of any part of it. And I know you weren't here, and I don't, I don't even know if Sue was here.
I was a selectman, but it didn't come to the selectmen's meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
It was all within the budget?
So, the point being here is that supposedly the stone wall was removed, okay? So unless someone is suggesting that this surveyor made an error, which is possible, we're, the edge, the outside edge of the curb is four feet, 4.37 feet, from the property line. Even if there's some sloping that had to occur, it did not necessitate removing the wall. The wall was marginal at best. A Google street view would show that the wall was just a bunch of round rocks, maybe a foot tall. So, as I stated last week and before, the issue here is not so much that something had to occur, had to occur to maybe facilitate the construction, but the process that was followed, which was woefully inadequate. And, as I said before, what we need, for anything like this in the future, is that there is a written protocol, is how to handle it. And, which would include having a good survey and have it properly staked, so people knew exactly where it was, and if it was absolutely essential. Currently, the way the road ended up, does not appear that it was needed. And we had, and then, secondly, we have an employee who ended up with, as a potential benefactor here. Whether you argue, whether he was a benefactor, or he was saving the town money, it looks inappropriate.
And all I could offer is that a prior administrator-
I understand that.
Approved it.
What do you want us to do?
I don't want you to do anything. I'm just saying that this appears to have been an inappropriate action-
Which you said a few meetings ago, too.
But I didn't have any evidence of it, which I do, did have a survey.
Well, but you have evidence of what is surveyed today. You don't have evidence of what was surveyed.
And there is no evidence then of what was surveyed, so again-
So, but, again-
But the wall is, the boundary is the boundary.
Right, but you don't know where the road was, or whatever they-
It doesn't make any difference, the boundary is still the boundary. It isn't, it didn't go over the boundary, it didn't take the wall. Apparently, there's no reason to take the wall.
That it was halfway between the wall. But that's about, I thought there was some issue with it being...
It's, you know, I can't judge based on a photograph.
Anyway, I guess I'm not really sure what we're dealing, why we're dealing with it. Again, I get it, we've changed processes, or whatever, I've seen these pictures.
Yeah, but I just don't measure that mentally as being four and a half feet, but I don't know. And that's the edge of the road and the wall. But I think-
In any event.
I think that we're-
I don't think there's anything that can be done about it right now.
I mean, is this just a political statement, or what are we trying to do?
Come on, Sue, now, you know, this is not a political thing. This goes back before any other issues. The question here is that, the process, statements were made that did not seem accurate. And that's, I wanted to have it surveyed, to find out if they were accurate. The survey would indicate that they're not accurate.
Right, we still have yet to see the survey, so I wanna see the actual certified survey.
I have a rough draft, again, this is an earlier draft, and I will make sure you have a copy of that in your hand. But it will reflect exactly this, so...
And whose statement, who stated it before, is it, why, what statements were made? I mean, we weren't there, so...
We were, statements that were made in this meeting by the contractor and Ms. Lyman.
I would respond to that and just tell you that I would not remove that wall if it wasn't necessary. I mean, it was removed because it was in the way. I don't know what the survey's showing now, but you gotta remember that behind the curb line, there's another two feet of road that has to be constructed, in order for the curb to sit on. You can't build it up against a bunch of boulders and trees that are growing out of the wall, so, believe me, we, don't bother removing walls unless it's absolutely necessary. Especially it was, I had to do it kind of sporadically, it wasn't supposed to be, according to the original concept, but couldn't move the road to the right because there's-
Utilities.
So it had to go, I'm telling you.
I'm not arguing that it had to be moved, I'm just saying the process-
I mean, I think it was a great, you know, one of the things I remember about O'Connell Road is that we used a local contractor to do it.
Yeah, I agree.
Mm-hmm.
But you keep bringing it up, like we've, like, totally done some of the, I mean, for once we give something to a local contractor, now we're saying that, you know, he did something inappropriate?
I did not say that. What I'm saying is that, if the proper channels had been solved, or, excuse me, followed, the property had been surveyed, so it was accurately, everyone knew exactly where the bounds were, maybe it had to be moved, maybe it didn't, but there's nothing that was followed. And right now, it looks like there's four and a half feet from the boundary to the outside curb. Even if you add two feet for site work, it's questionable whether the boundary would have been impacted. But, if the contractor doesn't know what the boundary is, exact boundary is, then that's why these things arise. So, that's my point. Okay? Okay.
I think we can let this go at this point. Enough is enough, I think-
So, do you wanna bring, I just wanna make sure, is this, are we done with the subject?
I was done with it last week, or two weeks ago, so, yeah.
Okay. That'll go. With that said, we're gonna move on to citizens' concerns. Yes?
I'd love to bring this subject up again. If protocol wasn't followed, if memos weren't made, and you're blaming it on the previous administration, should just assign by you, so what procedures, what checks and balances are in place, so things like this don't happen? Do you just sign checks, or do you have to have some kind of proof as to what you're signing?
Every check is reviewed, very carefully, and then we review it. And-
Who reviews it?
Our finance department reviews it, and then we review it, as we sign it.
So you sign this check with no documentation, no follow-up, whether it changed-
I'm not gonna go out there and measure, and examine everything that happened-
I'm not asking you to do that, but there was-
For 100 checks-
Wasn't there project code, or something, whatever, it gets assigned a project code, right?
No, it was just an-
Was there nothing attached to it?
You're asking something about 18 months ago, but I asked at the time, I believe, if I remember correctly, about what this is for, and I was told it's for the O'Connell Road Extension project. And that was probably coded on the pavement.
It was probably coded, because it's all coded, there's documentation attached to it, and if it's-
So I, at that point, I had no objection to it.
Then review.
You said there was no documentation.
Who did?
Emmett just did.
No, I did not say that.
He didn't, okay.
You just did it. You said there was no documentation, it was all done verbally.
There was no approval.
Oh, you're speaking back at the project.
At the project time.
There's documentation that comes with the check for us to review.
So I upwired it, and I was told there was nothing, so what documentation came with it?
So with each check, there's a, like a memo and a coding as to what account it comes out of. And that explains what it was for. Now, all, if I remember correctly, again, it was 18 months ago, or thereabouts, it was stated it was O'Connell Road Extension project. So, something similar to that, so...
Did it say pillars, did it, or did it just say?
I don't remember it.
Next.
I'm sorry that you're upset about this, Sue, but taxpayer money was spent, and there's no documentation, there's no follow-up, there's nothing of it.
As far as we've been told, tax, less tax money, payers money was spent than could have been spent.
But we don't know that, because there's no documentation. And it was all done between an employee and their supervisor and the contractor.
And the first selectman.
Okay, but there's no proof to that. And he's not here to say whether or not he did it.
Well, we did call him, and he did say-
You said it didn't come to the selectmen's meeting, so there's-
No, because why would it? It doesn't come to the selectmen's meeting if it's within a budget.
Right, but Mark's not here to say whether or not he approved it.
Okay.
So he can't say yes or no. My other thing is, he can be, he can get upset all you want.
I'm not upset at all.
I don't care at this point, I really don't. My question is, was the changes made to the deed then? Because now the town has given property to this person in exchange. There should have been some kind of deed recording.
There was apparently no change to the property boundary.
How can there not be?
Well, the maps would indicate that there was no taking of land, so there would be no change to the boundary.
If there was no taking of land, then there shouldn't be pillars.
The stone-
The stone wall was half on our property and half on his property. It had to come down, so...
Okay, so there should have been a made, a deed change should have been made.
And ordinarily, in that case, you'd rebuild the wall, somewhere behind it, 18 inches, two feet, whatever, at great expense. And a deal was made at much lower expense to the town
Okay.
to get the job done and satisfy the property owner.
Move on, comment.
Okay, that's enough. Do we have any other comments?
Yes, Todd Gellston, 50 Vogel Road. There's been a lot of talk in town about this for the past several months. And, talk can lead to misinformation, wrong conclusions. I think we should thank Rob Smith for digging into it, because what we heard prior to that was a big question mark. I think it's fair to say that it was a bad deal. I think it's fair to say it's a lousy process. So the question I wanna ask, going forward, what do you have in place today that's gonna prevent this happening again? Because $6,000, $5,500 is somebody's tax payment for the year. And that went to a property owner, and we can't really justify it right now at this moment. Or we never can. So, what I'm saying, and also, you make the talk, I'll give you an example. You mentioned 250 feet of wall, 261 feet of wall, and 140 bucks a foot to replace. Yeah, that's about right, pretty expensive. But I also heard, you need to replace the wall in kind of what it was before. And if it wasn't much of a wall before, it's more like 10 bucks a foot to replace. So I wouldn't go too far to say that the town got a good deal here. It's not clear to me, but I don't wanna be late with this. I think you guys did that enough already. But thank you for, Rob, for bringing out the facts. Now I have a better idea myself, I think the people here do too, as what the real story was. It was a bad deal.
I would say that we don't have the facts yet, because we don't actually have a formal survey in front of us.
Okay, good point. So next meeting, we'll see this early.
I've asked him since the last meeting for a formal survey in front of me, so I could look at it. I don't have that, so let's not-
That's fair. That's fair.
Let's not-
I would see that myself.
Okay.
But, going forward, folks, Board of Selectmen, what process do you have in place that prevent this kind of thing? I see a lot of bad things here. First of all, question, no survey, we don't really know where the boundary was back then, you know where it is now. That's bad.
So are you recommending to you that we try not to use local contractors?
Not at all.
Okay, I'm just asking.
No, that's not the point, Sue, you're missing the point. So, I think we have a better process, we're more likely to use local contractors to a more successful outcome. So, first thing was, boundary was not clear. The second thing, the quality of the wall was not assessed. What was the value here we're trying to replace? And thirdly, you had, when my business, where I work, have an employee-supervisor relationship on making a deal, it doesn't, it's not good. It's not good for the both parties. So we should prevent that happening again. Nothing, not casting dispersion against the employee or the supervisor, that puts them in a bad spot, really.
So who else, can I ask you, who else should have been called in to make that decision?
You should, first of all, you should have the Board of Selectmen, and- You should, first of all, you should have the board of selectmen and the town attorney.
No, 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 board of selectmen does not review every contract and every decision in the field.
But I'm just asking you, should the first selectman have been called in, and that's what happened?
I'm asking you. No, in this case, you didn't have third-party review. You have a situation between employee and supervisor, that, that's a conflict of interest right there.
And you had third-party review in the form of the first selectman at that point. Who reviewed it and it was called in when it was suggested. And the suggestion did not come from our public works director, it came from the contractor. And they're here to ask, if you'd like to, and we have an excellent survey of the property right here in front of you, if you'd like to look at it.
The contractor does not speak for the town, Emmett. Emmett, the contractor does not speak for the town. They can offer suggestions, but it has to be thoroughly reviewed by the town. My point is, this deal was not thoroughly reviewed, insufficient review. And so we've been talking about it for months, a lot of misinformation, thank you for, Rob, for clearing it up, and we wait for the survey. All I'm asking you, you folks, is what is the process going forward? I see opportunity for improvement, and I'll leave it at that, I'm not gonna argue with you in front of these people, waste everybody's time, but please think about it. It's, it's gonna be on the record, right, this is, this is gonna be in the meeting minutes?
I would imagine that, now from now on, there won't be any, there will be a change order anytime you change something.
Yeah, that is gonna be required.
I think that's.
It probably would have made sense in this case.
That's right.
But, okay, next thing I want to talk about, uh, is.
Can I just comment on, can I just make?
Yeah.
Do you mind if I?
Sure.
Going to the, to the survey that you had conducted. I have been directed that when a property line is in question, that I'm to request mapping from Jim Ventress. And ninety-nine percent of the time, I'm told the stone wall, if it's present, is the property line. We go back and we look at deeds, and that is how we determine property. So moving forward, I guess I would like direction from the board. At least two thousand trees to remove in our right way. Every single instance, I'm told, stone wall is the property line, and we're removing from the stone wall.
So that's a good question.
And I surveying every property to determine property line.
So, wanna talk to that, Emmett, or?
Because I've been told.
I would say that in most cases, the stone wall is the boundary. In this case, the discussion was removing the stone wall, this is, you're kind of apples and oranges. If, if the deed says and the map shows the stone wall is the boundary, it's the boundary.
Which it did.
I mean, it's.
So if that, I come into a situation where there's a tree that will cost five thousand dollars to remove, which we had a tree. We go by the mapping that Jim Ventress can produce, that's the direction I've been given. So if that's gonna change, I'd like to know.
I think this, in this case, a change order was in, in order.
Right.
And that's what should have occurred, because something, the road was moved, and walls were taken, and things outside of the normal project were constructed, and that's how it should have been addressed.
And that's the thing, there were parts of the project.
It should be to the public works director and the selectmen, I would assume, the first selectmen.
There are typically only change orders when you bid a project and affects the bid.
Right.
So Jim had work that was a change order to his scope of work, and we did issue change orders. This was outside his scope of work, so that's why I changed.
But I didn't charge you anything for it, so that's why.
There was no, so there was no change to his bid price, so I don't know what a change order would have.
I, I don't know, I, I don't know how else you document something like that. There was someone else that had their hand raised.
No, no, I.
But I'll go back to the property lines, it was like some direction with the trees, because that.
That's a good, and I think, Emmett, we should put that down for discussion at our next meeting, maybe to come up with a process for that, because it's not fair to Beth to be on the line for that.
We, we've been doing that, and she's been going to Jim, and he's been coming back with.
Right, but if now.
Mapping, which is time-consuming and difficult.
Comes into question.
So what are we doing to document it, so that we don't get told that we're paying for trees to take down, trees on private property or something like that in five years, and it comes up again and we pay the bill, and, so are we documenting it somehow?
I, I don't know, are we documenting the fact that we asked?
This is all been told to me verbally, so, that's why I'm bringing it.
Asked, asked for it in writing, henceforth.
Every tree I remove?
Every.
Where the boundaries are.
When you, when you are looking for a boundary line that's uncertain.
That's, if it's, if I can't go by a stone wall, what am I to do?
Well, unfortunately, you have people that are, want documentation, so.
So am I to survey?
No, you are not to, I mean, survey via Carl and Jim Ventress.
I, again, if, if the maps indicate, I mean, this map showed that it was a stone wall, this has to be the boundary.
Take down a five hundred dollar tree, you wanna survey?
I'm not saying that. Except if the boundary shows it's a stone wall, it's a stone wall.
But this boundary showed it was a stone wall, this survey.
Yeah, it's.
So I'm not understanding, what's the difference?
And in writing comments on it as well.
And the deed referenced the stone wall.
The difference was how the whole thing was done, and that it showed that it had to be taken, that's the difference here. So. I don't think anyone's questioned locally where the boundary is. We have boundaries which have stone walls, but the town property is on the backside of that stone wall too. So, and that's why she is asking where the boundary is.
So wait a second, so, um, the, the issue is that it was taken down, or, what's the issue? If it's not that the wall was.
The issue is that, we were told that it had to be taken down, the question was whether it needed to be taken down, the survey, to me, indicates that it doesn't, didn't need to be taken down. But it should have been determined in the field before we made an expense to an individual and built something on private property at the town's expense, without any documentation for anything.
But, I mean, that would mean she has to get documentation every time she does something and a stone wall's involved.
We better increase the budget.
I, I'm not understanding it, I guess.
I, I don't know how else to explain it.
So.
So we're not taking property here, or potentially taking property, and if there's a question where the boundary is, then it can be determined pretty easily in the field, if the, if it's the wall, it's the wall. I don't, and maybe Ms. Lunt can tell us, how are you handling trees that are in the middle of stone walls, if the wall is the boundary?
It's difficult, Randy?
Randy Jilby, you wrote, as a former selectman, the question of boundaries came up while I was a selectman. Had to do different issue subdivision, and the owner wanted to subdivide, he was claiming a boundary, a fence line as the boundary, and there was some question about that. The selectmen held a meeting, went out there and determined the boundary. So the selectmen do have authority to go out in the field and make a decision as a determination.
Yes.
What's the boundary?
Does it?
And that particular property.
We did that.
Recurred over and over again.
Right, but it was set.
And they finally stopped that when I said, this body made a decision, you had fifteen days to appeal it, you didn't, it is what it is.
So all the selectmen were out, or the first selectmen?
Yes, we have the selectmen's meeting in the field.
In the field.
With the boundary.
Okay, thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
All right, very familiar with that one. Yes, sir?
Mike Massey, um, the, the stone wall that was removed, were the stones reused, were they disposed of, were they? So if you ride up and down that road, that stone wall is, I'm gonna say ninety-five percent round rock, and it appears that the pillars are nice, flat cut stones with a nice four by four flat cap on top, so.
I, I wasn't there, I can't comment on that.
I was, I'm just looking at all the other stones.
I can, I can tell you, we picked out all the best rocks at the top, and piled them, loaded them in a truck and piled them for the pillars to be built. The rubble at the bottom and the round, big round ones, like along the base, they were removed. So, but the best ones were kept for the, I was not sure if it was the tom or something, somebody brought.
You picked and chose what was suitable.
Yeah, we, the best rocks were saved, is what I personally liked to do.
Okay. Thank you. I, I think we've beaten this one long enough, perhaps we should move on, any other?
It's not about this, don't worry about it. It's, uh, it's about the bridge. And I have a question, I guess it's a process question as well. When the bridge goes out, are the police contacted? What I suggest is rather than you make six phone calls over an hour or so, and get lucky and finally call you back. Uh, we've got police and ambulance that need access to that bridge. I would think the DOT's responsibility, as soon as their bridge goes down, they call the police, inform them. This is a major highway, right? So if they got doing that, they should be doing that, that would solve a lot of aggravation, look at the ambulance rides down to the.
I can maybe add a little bit to this. Valley Shore has a direct line, which is our dispatch center, a direct line to the bridge tender. Bridge tender is supposed to, anytime the bridge goes down, is supposed to call Valley Shore, and then the notifications are made. This was what I was told when I met with Valley Shore. Whether that's happening or not is a question to be determined, but why they're making individual phone calls.
They, they are doing that.
When they have an entire dispatch center that can do an everbridge like you suggested, and send out the notifications to the parties that need to do it, myself, my chief, my assistant chief, and so on, and the rest of the fire chiefs and.
So emergency services are made aware of it by Valley Shore.
Correct. We should, no, we're not right now, but I'm saying it should be, you mentioned an everbridge.
Yeah.
And Valley Shore can, can generate that everbridge group. I was on the original everbridge committee for the state, so I'm a little familiar with it.
Yeah, and I think Linda said that they actually.
Valley Shore does have a distribution list, because I got a notification that morning.
Okay.
But via email, so I, I just don't think email is the best way to notify people.
I know here on Valley Shore's, um.
They said they were.
Distribution list, but, so, but yeah, we get, we get an email from Valley Shore that says the bridge is out, and it was like within two minutes, and I also, you know, we also signed up to the four oh four oh four CT dot, and then that went out as well.
Maybe we should just have emergency management double check on that, just a thought.
Yeah, I mentioned to Craig that he should be on Valley Shore's list, so that he can put that out.
That would solve the whole problem, one, one, one point contact to note the gate, hey, the bridge is out, we'll call you back when it's ready.
So this could happen tomorrow.
Okay.
The real stuff?
Yeah.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, okay, any other? All right, thank you, moving on. Unfinished business, East Haddon Village Revitalization Committee update. The RFQ is, uh, for the town property down by the swing bridge, our former offices, is due tomorrow. We're gonna see about noon, I believe it is, they come in, two o'clock, they're due by two o'clock. They tend, uh, RFQs tend to come in at the last minute, I'm not quite sure why they can't get them a little sooner, but that's how it works, and so we'll see what happens at that point. The transfer station committee report, couple of things on that, we, what was it, about two weeks ago now, week and a half ago last Friday, a week before last Friday, the RAM failed completely. And, uh, had it inspected, was no repair to it. The, we've been discussing it, knowing that this was something that could happen, about a seventy thousand dollar part to have it rebuilt from scratch. And the estimated time was about three months to get it in place. When Willamette Waste became aware of this, they came back and said, you know, we've got one here, a used one, we can install it for you very quickly. Uh, it's gonna cost you about twenty-five hundred dollars to install it, two thousand five hundred, and we'll charge you three hundred dollars a month, and they're responsible for it. And we have the flexibility to do whatever we want going forth. So, that was a darn good deal, and Beth suggested, and I agreed immediately, that let's get that done. The installation was completed on Monday of this week, and it's operational now. So we're back to normal with our, uh, transfer station at this point, operating as we should. We did postpone the rerouting that was going to take place, and that was an issue that we just felt there was too much confusion, we didn't want that. Gonna give that a little time to settle in with this new RAM, make sure we don't have any further problems. In the meantime, we took one of the three recycling compactors and started using that for our regular trash. Uh, it's not quite as large, but it serves the purpose. Incidental with that, we had to be very careful, because there's always a certain amount of moisture, liquid that's squeezed out as you compact. And in the terms of the RAM, the hopper, that's provided for, there's a collection system, and it's taken care of. In the case of the recycling rams, it wasn't, so we had to be very careful in terms of putting down kitty litter, so to speak, and making sure we caught all that effluent that was coming out of it. Didn't allow that to get into anything that it shouldn't be in. So that was something they were on top of almost immediately, paying a lot of attention to it. Uh, it worked well for the time we had to use it, and fortunately, we're back in business again. And as I say, we'll be moving forward to that rerouting, and getting that done, and then we're gonna go forward and see where we go with the bags. That's the last step in the process. Uh, any questions or any thoughts on that?
Yes, one question, I, I think it's great that we have this opportunity where the RAM was installed. Did that, I thought there was a lot of problems with the floor of the, of the packer, compactor.
Down and did a thorough cleaning, I was down there myself while they were doing it. Everything was straightened around, cleaned, and whatever could be overhauled was overhauled at that point.
So they addressed the holes and the rust or whatever, I remember that, there was a substantial list, I don't have it in front of me, the things that were wrong with it, but that, they were all addressed at the same time?
I, I.
What's that?
That unit was removed completely and immuno.
That, that's totally, I mean, they cut the thing out with a torch.
Oh, okay, all right, that, that wasn't clear to me how that all occurred, okay, thank you.
It took as long as until Monday afternoon, because they had to weld a new one in. And that's, uh, I've done a little welding, that's a lot of welding, and it has to be done right. Sue? Okay. Citation, hearing, uh, ordinance discussion, we haven't moved on that, control of animals, once again, that's in Michael Saki's and Jim's hands, and I've gotta bump them, see where we stand with that. And there's nothing on the cemetery committee at this point. And moving forward, rather quickly, new business, warden commission committee changes, there are none, we keep that in there on a, uh, every meeting, it allows to add anything on the, uh, the day of the meeting, just in case it comes in, and often it does. Tax free funds likely, likewise, we don't have anything for that today, and we're back to more public comment. Any? Todd?
The cemetery discussion, cemetery committee discussion, what's the nature of that discussion?
Trying, you know, the cemetery committee really doesn't have a well-defined role to play, and we're trying to figure out whether or not we need it first, does it serve a purpose? The maintenance, the upkeep is part of our grounds now, and it's being handled through our facilities manager, and doing a very good job of it. And so the question, you know, what is the cemetery committee all about, and what should their role be? And we're gonna try to work on that and come up with some answers for it. Certainly, one of the questions that I'm aware of is we're running out of space, and we need to give some thought to cemeteries, because they are back to life for most of us. And there's some questions about really identifying what cemeteries are out there, who's in there, and where are they? Keeping in mind that the cemeteries go back to the American Revolution and before, so there's a lot of confusion out there. So there's discussion about just what the cemetery committee's role might be, and how they should move forward, and that's, that's the questions.
A follow-up question to that is, I believe there's a number of endowments for cemeteries in this town.
And our financial department is handling that, and curiously enough, if you go back, actually, almost to two thousand and before, a lot of confusion existed on that, and getting that straightened around is probably important.
Correct.
So we get a good grip on exactly what we've got and how it ought to be used.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
There, Angie Jansky, I was wondering, you said that you're gonna, eventually, once things settle down with the transfer station, you're gonna move forward with the bag system. Actually, considering the bag system, are you gonna give enough time for people to know that you're definitely gonna do it, are you gonna give a choice to the, is it gonna go to a town?
I think we need to have some meetings on it, public hearings, and talk about it, and really get people up to speed and understand what it is, what it offers us, what it takes away from us. How it works, what the impact is on your businesses, and I think most people don't fully understand that, and what the options are that are out there. I think once people are fully aware of it, then we'll let people make a decision.
All right, I'd just like enough time to.
Uh, we're not moving, I don't wanna move headlong into this, because if you have people who don't understand what's going on, it's never gonna work well.
So does it, just a question, does it go to, do we have to bring it to town, I think, that was one of your questions, do we have to vote on it, do we have to bring it to town meetings?
We have mixed responses on that, our lawyer has indicated we could implement it, I'm not sure if that's the wisest way to go. I think maybe a town meeting and a vote on it in the end is probably.
There just has to be a lot of communication, right?
We need a lot of communications ahead of that, so the people truly understand what they're doing.
And that there's a town meeting on it, so.
I would definitely like to know. I would definitely like to know, because I, I mean, at least I'd put it out to our clients and I know Chris Failo would put it out to his clients at least to know about a meeting that's gonna ultimately affect us. Because no longer would we be allowed to use the transfer station.
That's, that's part of the decision process.
Right.
And, you know, I've been over talking to Mira and over to Essex, looking at their operation. And we were meeting on a regular basis for a while there. I wanna get that going again now that things are settled down. Because I've got a lot, lot to say and bring forward and talk to you guys about.
There's, I'd love to do that because with Willimantic now, kinda, you know, is they kinda holding, you know, the prize? They, they're, we're leasing that equipment from them, so I'm not sure that they'd be so thrilled now for East Haddon pollers to bring their garbage to another town, another facility owned by a totally different company.
This, this is an octopus with lots of arms. And I've gotten familiar with most of them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment, questions? Okay, selection's discussion, the Memorial Day parade, at this moment, everything seems to be in place for it to work. We're going to start here, take it down to the Moody's Green, down to Nichols, and then we're headed down 149. And we'll end up going across Leesville Road and entering to the American Legion from below on the southern end of Neptune Avenue. Distance is about a mile and a half, ordinarily hike about a mile. We're gonna have water stations and ambulances and whatnot set up along the way, I think at the triangle where Leesville comes in. And one of the questions we're working on right now is parking because ordinarily people park down in that area and they're not gonna be able to if we're hiking through there. And so we're, we're in contact with Johnsonville. Hopefully, we're gonna be able to use some parking that they have and that'll give people a place to go. And if the weather's good, that's the way the parade sounds like it's gonna go. We've got Chad Hemphill as the chaplain. Billy Jean King, Major Billy Jean King, as a speaker for it. Irene Haynes intends to march with us. Normie Edelman feels he needs to be in Essex. And one of the questions, I've got Sue and Rob, are you guys planning on being with us for the parade or where do we stand on that? Any idea?
I'm not quite sure yet.
You're not sure? Rob?
I'll be there. I'm not sure where, what hat I'll be wearing, but.
Well, you can wear whatever hat you like, as long as it's decent. Anything else from you on?
On the parade or on other issues? I have something.
Parade or other issues?
I have one other thing. I, I was signing checks tonight, you know, so I came across this Richard Gates surveyor bill.
Yep.
Thirty-two hundred for Joe Williams Road and Robbie Road. What is this about and?
That's surveying a property boundary on East Haddon Conservation Commission land, open space property.
So does open space pay for this? Who pays for this?
Open spa, uh, excuse me, conservation, did I say open space? Excuse me, Conservation Commission land, Conservation Commission pays for that.
So it's in the budget and so why are you doing, so like, how do you determine why you're doing the survey?
That particular survey, uh, there were no boundary pins along two of the sides that we had surveyed. So we were trying to determine where the boundaries were.
Is there an issue, a dispute going on? I mean, why?
Uh, well, there may be now that we're having it surveyed, had it surveyed, but, um, the, uh. So that we would not, we survey all the properties. Typically, they come with a survey. This particular piece was not surveyed and there was no pins in place. So before we mark boundaries of any property, we have it, make sure we have a survey. In this particular case, we couldn't mark the boundaries because we did not have a survey.
So whose property is it? But is it, are you saying, so why, is it our property?
Yes, it's town property.
It's town property.
Town property, yes.
Okay. And are we doing something with it or just?
We may put trails on it, but we try and ascertain where all of our properties are, whether it's newly acquired, open space, or pieces that we've owned for some time.
So, so it's open space property?
Yes, it's open space, yeah.
Okay.
And when, that's when I said open space, I didn't mean the committee, it was open space, but it's managed by the Conservation Commission.
And, and what do we have for our budget for surveys?
It's just part of our operating budget.
So it's not in our town budget?
It's part of the Conservation Commission.
So how much do we spend a year on surveys for?
It depends on the properties and how often we survey them. So some of the properties come to us already surveyed, so obviously they don't need a survey. Occasionally, we cannot find a pin, so we may have to contract with a surveyor to find boundaries, corners, whatever. Do our best to find the boundaries. We work with Mr. Ventress or others to ascertain or neighbors sometimes to find the boundaries.
And there's no dispute with the neighbors on where the boundaries are or?
This is an interesting situation. There's a town road in the middle of this, which may be discontinued or abandoned. Some people think they own the town road. That was not clear in their deeds. There was no title searches done when they acquired it, best that we can determine. And there's conflicting surveys of the property and the town road. So Joe Williams Road goes down and right after it crosses over what eventually becomes Shady Brook. It goes to the left towards the elementary school in Algaquwin. Originally, it went slightly to the right along the edge of a swamp. And to properties that are out towards, would be towards South Winds. Or there was actually old roads that went out to Colchester Turnpike in a couple of different spots. In 1899, the property was, excuse me, the road was discontinued. 1900, the town rescinded the discontinuance. So the question is, is it still a town road? Right now, three properties, I believe, cross over that road and they don't indicate that the road is there. However, boundary that we're determining actually has very little to do with that. It's beyond that road. We're just trying to determine where the boundary was.
So you can put a trail in?
Uh, it's through the swamp. I don't know if we would put a trail through there, but.
I, I was just, it was just a lot of money to me, $3,200, and I wasn't really sure what the point was of the survey.
We always, we have surveys on all of our properties and if we don't have a survey, we have one done. So that we know exactly where the boundary are, so we can properly mark the boundaries. Due diligence for the town, for each taxpayer to know where their properties are.
And we're paying for it.
Yes. Lots of times when we get the property, it's already surveyed, either we've paid for it or it was surveyed prior. But this particular case, there were three parcels and, uh, and indistinct boundary between school property and the open space property that had to be determined. It was on a map, but there's no markings. We found one, I think the surveyor found one pin and one concrete monument that had been knocked over, so.
So what's the budget for, for the year for surveying?
Again, we don't have a specific budget for surveying because it's part of our operating. So if, for example, we had another piece that needed surveying and we didn't have enough in the budget, we would do it probably in a new fiscal year.
So there's no line item in.
No.
The budget that says, okay.
Nope, just part of our operating costs. For the Conservation Commission, that is.
Okay.
Okay.
I had one comment. Is that it? Sue? I just wanted to say that I was at the Board of Education meeting last night and I was really impressed by the number of students that received accolades and certificates of appreciation from the Board of Ed, I believe there's at least 10, possibly more. And including the entire junior, excuse me, the middle school cheerleaders who placed first in their competition. And we had several firsts that were, um, in various categories, there's a number of categories, I don't remember them all. And a couple of them are going out of state to exhibit their projects. So for, um, the innovation, invention, innovation, yeah. And invention convention, thank you. And it was very, really interesting to see them. Like I said, several first place, some seconds and honorable mentions. And they also awarded some students that, runners at junior high that had, had middle school that had placed first in their categories or in the top. Yeah, I believe, believe they're both first in their age group, so, so that was really good. And I also had the opportunity last week, or two weeks ago now maybe, to see the, the track team. And we have 45 members on the track team. It's our largest team in school. And, uh, they were competing against the Valley Regional in East Hampton. At East Hampton, it was a try meet. And, um, you know, did a great job and you're probably aware, we have some state champions and, and, you know, some champ, uh, some runners who have competed even nationally. So, uh, it's, uh, great to see them out there running. And I think with a team that large, we really need to be looking down the road and not too far in the future for a track for them to run on, so.
I think that's on the capital.
It is out there somewhere.
Facilities plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
It's out there.
But it was, uh, you know, I mean, some things they couldn't even really compete very well on because it, you know, we don't have a place for them to practice hurdles, for example, things like that. But, uh, but it, I've always been impressed, especially with track, where they support everybody, even if they're not competing in the event, so. That's all I had.
I've got a couple of granddaughters that just getting started on.
There you go, so, yeah. I mean, and, and all sizes, shapes and, you know, everybody's involved and, you know, from weight events to high jumping to running and sprinting. So it's just, it's a great opportunity for, and, and obviously, since we have 45 kids out there doing it, that, uh, I think they need all of our support.
Sounds good. Anything else? Sue? Okay. That being said, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight oh.
One.
Eight oh one.
Second.
And, uh, on favor?
Aye.
And I've just been informed that a motion and a second for adjournment is sufficient. We don't have to vote.
That is true. True.